We will begin with our invocation. Commissioner Wagner, I believe you are prepared to do that?
Well, that's such a charitable word. Will you join me in prayer? Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to represent your creation, at least here in Clay County, to make up and to have this opportunity to make change and to help those who have put us in these positions. Please give us the wisdom to make those good decisions. Give us the ears to hear from our staff and from our constituents that we may be able to do what they have brought us here to do and ask us to do. We ask all of this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
By the way, just for the for the commissioners, there seems to be some issue with the screen that I have here. So if you're seeking recognition, I will try to make an extra effort to scan the room. So if you are wishing to be recognized, please give me a sign so that I will know to recognize you as we go forward this evening. With that, next item on the agenda, our public comments. Are there any members of the public who would care to comment at this time on any issue? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is commission meeting minutes from January 4th. The second item is resolution 2024 dash one five is approving invoice payments from January 8th through January 12th for 54 invoices totaling 187,645 dollars and 62 cents. And the third item is 2024 ordinance O three. It's reappropriate and revise the advise but the the current budget in the amount of 2,500 dollars for the juvenile justice program assistance program receiving the second portion of a grant.
Thank you. Are there any commissioners wishing to comment on any of those items? Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
I I looked through the invoices and usually we have two different invoices to vote on. I since Megan, you know, the prosecutor, I didn't see any or we're sure there's no prosecutor's stuff mixed into this.
As far as I know, they were.
Okay. All right. I scanned it. I didn't see. I just wanted.
Sometimes they don't have any.
Okay. I just didn't want causing any trouble for Megan.
Any other comments before I seek a motion? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. You move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. We do not have any items on our regular agenda this evening, which brings us to our discussion items. We have three items under discussion, the first one being reallocation of April election funding, and that is the administration. So Administrator?
Yes, thank you.
Please proceed.
As the commission may recall, in the budget process, under the election board fund, we increased the funding for elections and in that amount also included approximately 150,000 dollars for an April election ballot where the county would have an item on the April election. That is not to be the case, so those funds can be reallocated. And so included in your packet was some suggestions of how to reallocate and utilize those funds. And so I'd like to briefly go through those, have discussion tonight, whatever direction the commission would give us, then we would bring that action item forward at next week's meeting to amend the budget to reflect your direction. So there are a couple of items. The first item deals with our outside agencies. And so as the commission may recall during discussion about funding for outside agencies, and we certainly have increased funding for various outside agencies, there was some discussion about two of our agencies, NNI, and also rebuilding Together Kansas City. As they both do similar work, there was discussion about the funding. And so the recommendation here, which is one of the things we talked about during the budget process, is to increase rebuilding KC Together from 30,000, which is an increase from this year, but to give additional funding of 22,500, which would give them a total of 52,500 dollars to do the improvements to homes within Clay County. As you recall, during the budget discussion, you asked me to reach out to KC, rebuilding KC to see, number one, did they have projects? Could they use the funds? And did they have the capacity to utilize the funds? And I I think I reported during the budget workshop that yes, they do have needs and yes, they are actually even adding on in January, an additional staff person to manage additional projects. So they do have the capacity to manage additional projects and utilizing those funds. So that's one recommendation to use some of those funds to increase rebuilding KC from 30,000 to 52,500. That would still leave 75,000 to NNI and all the other agencies as we had talked about during the budget. The second item for discussion is to move 7,500 to the government membership budget. Two purposes with that funding. So as the commission may recall, during the budget, membership and contributions to the EDC were reallocated for the funding of an assistant prosecuting attorney. That left no funding in the government membership budget to have just a membership with the EDC, as most jurisdictions do. So doing research on their site, the EDC has an annual membership that's called Diamond Crown, which a lot of the jurisdictions, municipalities in the county are members at that level for 4,000 dollars. And so in your RCA, we talk a little bit about what that membership designates. So it it gives the county 10 designated representatives, you know, invitation to speaker's reception, special recognition at events, and mention on the EDC website and social media. Now, I am asking to move more than just the 4,000. I'm asking for additional 3,500 because we've had some of our chamber memberships come forward and some of them have had some small incremental increases. So by taking an additional funding, we'll be able to fund all the memberships and we belong to all the membership, the chambers here in Clay County. The other thing is while we're talking about this and the government memberships and being a a Diamond Crown member of the EDC, I would point out to the commission that again, according to the EDC, the commission has memberships on their board of directors. And the commission in earlier in 2023 passed resolution 2023 dash two four three, appointing Commissioners Lawson, Johnson, and Withington to those three seats on the EDC board, but the resolution specified for 2023. So the commission does need to think about who are those three positions that you would like to appoint to the EDC Board of Directors. And then the last item in which recommending to transfer funds is transferring again, this is out of the general fund, to the highway fund in the amount of 50,000 dollars for the long road area road project. We had residents that came several meetings ago about a desire of upgrading that to a chip and seal road. And while it is scheduled in 2025, there was desire of the commission to see if there was a way to move that project up into 2024. Now, as we talked about, there are some issues out there that have to be resolved, but this would then allocate the funds that once those issues are resolved, this project could move forward. And of course, our desire would be to move it forward here in 2024. Now, that does still leave about 70,000 dollars of that funding that I would recommend at this point to leave in the election board budget. And should needs come up later on in the year, that would be a resource that could be available that staff could bring forward to reallocate. We also know we did increase their budget because we know we've got a presidential election and certainly August and November elections, they are more expensive than normal August and November elections. We did increase for that, but our recommendation is to leave those unallocated funds there at this point in time and then come back to the commission if there's a need to use those. With that, I'd certainly answer any questions and look for direction from the commission.
Are there any commissioners who would have a question or would like to comment? Commissioner Johnson, I believe you were seeking recognition.
Yes, thank you, sir. I agree with all these. I think this is great. The only concern I have is on the chip and seal project. 50,000 dollars would my concern is if that's enough or not. I thought the discussion was it was like close to 100,000 dollars, but I I could be off on that.
I, you know, I would defer to Deputy County Administrator Walters. I did reach out to confirm if I'm if I'm proposing to you all to move money, I wanted to make sure we moved enough money. So I'd let them answer that question, but they did confirm that 50,000 would deal with the chip and seal. And also, I think there were, you know, some drainage and pipes and things, and they felt like that would meet the need, but I'm gonna I'm looking around going, is someone coming up?
Good afternoon, Commission. Deputy County Administrator Carl Walters. We decided that we take the repairs that we're going to do to the road out of our 340 fund and then take the 50,000 to turn around and do the chip and seal.
Okay, so so this is enough then to get that road, once the legal issues are taken care of?
Correct. We'll take care of the tubing and the rocking and stuff out of our 340 fund.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions, Commissioner Lawson? I'm sorry, will you finish, Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Lawson, while the deputy administrator is still up the I wasn't sure if you had questions for him.
Okay, yeah, I I do. I guess it's on. A couple of questions. I want to make dead certain sure. I know it's long road area, but the road we're discussing is Rhine King, correct?
Correct.
The gravel road.
Correct.
So I'd like this corrected for the record to say that we're going to do this for Rhine King. In addition to that, as you're coming, you know, you know how it is out there. You're coming up long and then it becomes 144th. Then it switches into something else. Really, it was, I think that the really bad areas were Belmont, 140th, and Rhine King were the three that kind of were the worst. Is that about like a two mile string there or less, one and a half?
It's two miles or less, yes.
I'm I'm sorry?
Two miles or less, yes.
Okay, okay. So if that's.
Yeah, it's 139th and it's 140th and it's Belmont and Rhine King in short.
Belmont, 140 and Rhine King, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so if that's like a mile and a half, say, and and I'm not real clear yet on your whether you say it's just a a mile or you have the lane mile. So would the 50,000 cover all all of that?
Correct.
It'll do a mile? Is there?
It's about a mile and quarter that.
Mile, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then do you have to do like, I remember one time you were talking when we were in budget hearings, you mentioned the fact that when you do that chip and seal, like say you've got a chip and seal road that's in pretty bad shape. I thought y'all went through there and reclaimed and then you came back and did your magic with the actual chip and seal. That that 50, I'm just worried that we're not giving you enough to be able to do all the things you need to do out there and do them properly with just the 50,000. That was my only concern. So, you know, that's that's in in your in your thought process, so you tell me.
Correct. Our our main process is we're going to come in there, we're going to turn around, add rock to it for the base. We'll reclaim it, we'll add water to it so we can turn around and be, I'm going to say it's like concrete, but you know how it is. And then we'll turn around, prep it, we'll let it set for a little while to make sure that it's going to stay so if we have any bad spots that come up, because you can't see them until after you have some moisture. Once you turn around, find that moisture and we're going to ditch it, we're going to take care of the tubes, make sure we got proper drainage before we turn around and take it and chip seal it.
Okay. So if you feel if you're comfortable with that 50, that it'll do it, then I'm happy with it also. The other thing is, you know, we're and we had a major discussion on this last time we talked about it, and that was the fact that there is some legal stuff going on there.
Correct.
I I still firmly believe, after we talked about the fact that really that road can be done, Rhine King can be done without widening it widening it because there were a multitude of other roads that we had discussed that were the same width as it is that are chip and sealed. So it doesn't have to be that wider area. I feel like if we're sitting here waiting for the courts to do their magic and get this all taken care of, we could still be sitting here in '25 or '26 waiting for that to be done. That that's my biggest concern. You know, I think those people have waited long enough.
Commissioner, I think if you're going to get into legal issues, it might be best to address counsel because.
Correct. And that would fall in.
Well, I'm not really getting into legal issues.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if it takes a long while to get that approved and done in the courts, these people could still be sitting here next year or the year after waiting for the for that to be done. So my concern is, I guess the two things I want to know, and you've given me the answer on the one, Rhine King is going to be done, yes, scheduled for this year, yes, when? And and I think I'd like to hear from your lips to mine and God's ears that we can do this and do it right away. Not now, I understand, but you know, in the spring, as soon as it warms.
And I would say I would prefer that to the legal because until that takes place, then I'm not going to, I will, I step away from that answer.
Well, then then we might not get it done as the way it comes down. If we're going to wait for that all to be taken care of, then then, you know, if if we are going to wait for the courts to dismiss or whatever they were going to do, so we could proceed, we need to go ahead and get the darn road done, in my opinion. And I don't, I'd like to hear how everybody else feels about it, but I I just, I think they've waited long enough.
Commissioner, first, then, Commissioner.
Anyway, I'll let somebody else speak.
I would just say, because I mean, we are dealing about, if I remember right, the plaintiff would contend they own both sides of the road, which would imply everything in between. The other thing that I would point out, as much as we would either disagree or agree, we are talking about a citizen who is trying to assert their property rights. They may or may not prevail. That's that's something for the courts to decide, but we, this body is not competent to set aside a property right claim of a citizen that goes through the courts. So we are, you know, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, we are in fact bound to whatever the judiciary does and at the speed that they see fit to work. So I mean, you know, we we can't set aside the courts and and go off on our own. So I don't want to set up unreasonable expectations that we will get it done. The courts will do what the courts will do, and we do not have the power to take that decision out of the hands of the courts. Commissioner Wagner, I think you had a recognition.
Yeah, but I and I think I may address a little bit what my colleague may may say. So I'll ask this in a way to make sure that I remember what I heard correctly from before. As I recall, the issue related to when we actually would let this contract, because as I understand it, we will have a set of chip and seal projects, we will put that out to bid, those will be done by a third party, and we will most likely do that sometime in the month of March, if I remember, or it could be, or it could be, but but needless to say, by the spring. By that time, we may or may not have some sort of decision from the courts related to the particular issue that our presiding commissioner has mentioned, but it but it also strikes me, if I remember correctly, that part of that issue somewhat relies on how wide the road is. Currently, it is 20 feet. What we would, what we would probably suggest based on how we currently do things or current rules and regs around this sort of thing is 22 feet. If it is 22 feet, then the issue of who owns that property and how it's ultimately adjudicated then becomes an issue. But if it is at 20 feet, which is where we currently are, then that issue is less of an issue. Am I correct in in those assumptions?
I think it's fair to say that at 22, the lawsuit contends that the current width of the road impedes on the ownership rights of a landowner.
Mm hmm.
The current width, not wider. So I guess I would be reluctant to agree that the the current owner would believe that a chip seal on the current width.
Okay.
Would be would not be problematic.
Does doesn't matter because he thinks it still is property anyway, so I guess.
I would assume he would say that an expansion would be more problematic.
Sure, sure.
But the current width is, I think, the assertion is, is also would also be problematic.
Okay, but our but our position is that it is not private property and it is.
A road.
A road.
A public road.
A public road.
Yes.
So I guess my my feeling would be, you do have a little time, not a lot, but a little, and at that point, then, to me, it would seem whether or not the commission, which it wishes to double down on its current position, that a road is a road and it's ours and we'll go ahead and chip and seal it, as opposed to expanding it and then inviting more litigation or or greater risk as a result of that. So I tend to think, I'll just say, I'm okay with what has been recommended here, and I will take it from the deputy administrator that the amounts that are here are sufficient to provide what is there. I guess, I guess my only proviso to that is just simply, well, let's see where we are in April when we let this thing out, and then we can make the decision as to whether or not we wish to accept a little risk or a lot of risk, or or to do nothing. But I think I'm hearing and have heard that doing nothing is not necessarily an option that most would agree with.
Right.
But but that would be my position for whatever, however, that can be helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thanks, yeah. No, I was just going to jump in and and say at least part of that in terms of the the question around the width, seems seems like that isn't really going to be the deciding factor because they're asserting that the the current width of the road already, you know, that they have some kind of property ownership over that. So, yeah, I was just going to suggest that I don't think that gives us an out to to bypass the the court proceeding. But I think, look, I think we put the money now. I I support the allocations presented to us. We put the money, it's ready to go as soon as we, I think, if I recall, council has a motion to dismiss, is that right? And so hopefully, we get a favorable ruling sometime early in the year, and then that sets us up well to proceed with getting this done. And we'll cross that bridge when we come to. Thanks.
Any other comments? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, yes. So I'm also in full full support of all the proposed for the for the funds. The only thing I have concerns with is that extra 70,000 dollars. Do we plan on just like if we don't need it for the elections moving forward this year, when will we be able to utilize that for other projects? Because I'd love to see that being added to our road projects as well, because these are not the only roads we have out there that are having issues. So do we have an idea maybe when we could pull that and throw it in the pot with the mix and get that allocated for more road projects?
You were inquiring of the administrator?
I am, yes.
Or or the deputy administrator? I was a little confused.
I think that's more of a question probably for for our county administrator.
Very well.
Which thinks maybe for the.
County administrator?
We can certainly, you know, at the time that we get ready to put the bids together, you know, we'll be a little further into the year, see if there are any other issues that come up from the commission in which we may need some additional funding, and then certainly present all those options to the commission on how you'd like to utilize those funds.
By the way, just parenthetically, I would I would add that I don't think this money is burning a hole in our pockets. And if we're going to run the county like a business, businesses usually don't spend out everything, but they hold something back in reserve. So I think that it's prudent to wait and see what other needs may present themselves.
No, I agree. I just know that we have other road needs and we've we've had numerous conversations and discussions about it. And if any of the funding could go to help improve the roads and give Carl a little extra money to to get some of these projects done, I'm in full support of that, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Withington, I believe you sought recognition.
Yeah, so Carl, you said that you were going to take some money out of a fund for this project. That's not going to take away from any other projects, will it?
No, we are, we, Tara and I sat down and we looked at it and stuff for the gravel that we're going to add to it, the rock and the tubes, we already have them in stock. So that's not going to create us a problem.
Okay, I just, I don't want to take away from one project for another project. And, you know, I know I'm all for road improvement, so I think this is great. I'm fine with the recommendations, but to Megan's point, we have 70,000 dollars, and I've said this before, you know, we're spending over $5 million this year on roads and, you know, we can always use more. But as a representative of the Western District who pays taxes and gets no return on our investment from the county, there are several projects in the Western District that I would like to see the county, you know, Cersei Creek Trail is through one of the least walkable parts of the entire Kansas City area. Kids are bused as close as one block to school because the neighborhood's been deemed unsafe for walking. The Cersei Creek Trail, we've been able to get from Harvin to 48th Street, but I would like to see the county look at partnering with Kansas City Parks to finish from 48th Street to Clay Como City border. Also, another idea, project idea would be to partner with Port Kansas, Port KC for Harlem feasibility study, access feasibility study. I know I've mentioned this before, but, you know, we've had some regular meetings with Port KC and Port KC is going to be getting an earmark from Congressman Cleaver's office. Port KC has said that we can use some of that money for this, but they would like to see the county help out a little bit too. So Harlem's one of the, it's right next to North Kansas City. It's got a lot of potential. It's just the access to it has been cut off because of the railroad tracks. So Port KC is having some really good conversations with the port, not the Port Authority, the Corps of Engineers on the levee and everything. So they may be taking over ownership of the wet side of the levee, but they're looking at how we can improve access to Harlem from North Kansas City. So those are, those are two projects that I would like to consider. And, you know, if any of my other commissioners from the Western side have any ideas, I'd like to hear them. You know, I, again, I don't want to be that East West guy, but but the Western side pays taxes too, and I mean, we don't get anything in the budget or anything like that. So I would like to see us start doing more that where we can in the Western District. So that's all I have.
That's good.
Yeah, that, however, I think, do we do any anything? I don't know. I'm asking as far as do we cooperate with the cities in the other district, in the Western District?
Well, we do, we do cooperate with them and turn around, we stay in touch with them and stuff. And as far as like the trails and stuff, they wanted to extend them and stuff, and I didn't know about the 48th Street. And I know you'd mentioned that some of that money going down there, but we we can truly, and I'm sure that the administrators say that we can look into it and see about doing that, that's whatever you guys want to do with it.
Yeah, so it sounds like.
Administrator, yes.
Sorry. So it sounds like if you have suggestions for projects, then what we can do is compile a list, maybe get some estimates on what that would look like, and then bring that back for another discussion item for the commission to kind of talk about what you would like to do with the additional 70,000.
Commissioner, did you, will you seek recognition first? Please go ahead.
Okay, just I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. But the the only thing I would say is, when when March comes, if this has not been resolved in the courts, the the width thing is a bunch of baloney, in my opinion, because we've got roads out there that are not that particular width that are chip and sealed. So if it comes down to push and shove, then as far as I'm concerned, I will be coming back and fighting very strongly that we go ahead and get this cared for as at the width that it is. And and I think that, you know, that would be my only request. But I I would like to make sure that in this whole thing, that we change long road upgrade to Rhine King upgrade and so that we're we're actually discussing the proper road.
We will correct the.
Thank you.
Name on because. -name on, because these items, if you give us direction, they'll be in an ordinance next week to approve.
Okay.
And so we'll make sure that the name reflects and maybe even drew a map attached to it.
Yeah.
So that there's no doubt about what we're talking about.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Couple things. I, I agree with my colleague on that and I would assume that when that list comes forward in April, we will know where that lawsuit currently sits and all of that.
Yes.
So that's, that's fine. To my other colleague's comments, I, I often say that I would sure like to show the folks in the Western District that they get more than a tax bill from the county to show what their, their dollars go for. But, so to that point though, and I think whether it's his, the, the suggestions he has made or others, I, I might suggest that just looking at what may be coming before some of the Mark committees and what some of the other cities are working on currently, since the county's participation has generally been what has come from the Road District Fund, I mean, that's kind of how they, they see our participation. I have a feeling if we said, hey, we've got some money in our pocket, what do you got? That we might probably have, would have more projects than we know what to do with, number one. But I think at least it more, fairly is the wrong word, but at least it gives everyone a shot to say, here's what I got and here's where I've got a hole. So that if we were to participate, everyone's got a decent chance and then we can see the merits from there. So just a suggestion to, to see what's out there because I'm not sure if I were to, I don't know what's out there. But I have a feeling there's a lot out there that we could be helpful on. So I'll just leave that suggestion there. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, sir. As far as leaving that $70,000 in the election budget, when would be for 2024, when would be the last date, last, I don't need the exact date, but a month that we know that we'd, we'd even need to use that money for a 2024 election, if you know?
It'd be the end of the year, right, from the November election?
Well, we'd use it in November, but wouldn't we have to know before-
In August.
August?
We would have to get on the ballot the end of August.
Oh.
Oh, yes, I mean, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. If we put a question before the voters?
So we'd know by August if we have, if we need that. That'd be the latest we'd know for November. Okay. And then the other question I had is, or maybe suggestions, maybe we can discuss, and we talked a little about this lawsuit, then maybe, maybe we can have a, because we shouldn't be discussing this probably out here, but maybe we should have an executive session, we could discuss a little bit more details of this lawsuit. One of the concerns I have, and we're talking about, you know, maybe we should just do it anyway. Having spent most of my time, or a lot, a lot of time, more than most attorneys have in front of judges, I could see the potential of, of really ticking off a judge if we go ahead and say, we're gonna pave this over anyway, even though it's in a lawsuit and you haven't ruled on it yet. That could not bode well for us. And depending on who the judge is and, and the circumstance, if this isn't, doesn't get dismissed. So I'd prefer to have discussions about that and, and pros and cons of doing it and not doing it. Maybe in an executive session where we can have some opinions from the attorneys and, and that kind of stuff. If, I'm just throwing out there right now that maybe that might be a better way to, before we make decisions on whether we're gonna do it or not.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation is, there is some benefit of time, I think, March into April. I am optimistic we'll have some direction from the court. And that would be a really good time, you know, even if we don't maybe, but certainly if we do, to have a discussion about where we are. I, to be honest, if we had this discussion next week in executive session, I don't know that'd be very productive because it's mostly what we don't know. But I think if we shot for end of February or sometime in March, I think we could probably have a pretty productive conversation.
Okay. Thank you. And I, as far as the way this is, the request is written right now, I agree with all of it 100%. So I'm, I'm good with it.
By the way, nice, thank you for the segue. Administrator, I assume the object of this discussion is in part to give you direction. And I think, assume what you're looking for is consensus to go forward with what has been presented to us. So if that's the case, then I'll, I'll go around. But have I got the correct take on this?
That is correct. We were looking for direction that if you concur with this, then we will bring the budget amendment ordinances forward to you at your next meeting next week. So we're prepared to do that. It sounds like there is consensus on these three items of transferring the 22,500. We're also working with the outside agencies, so that's why it's imperative. I've got your direction on that particular item, to have those agreements come before you next week for approval in the service agreements with our outside agencies. And so having this final number will let me finalize with rebuilding together Kansas City. You're fine with the 7,500 going to government memberships and then the 50,000 being allocated for the road project.
Can I get some, just head nods, just to make sure we have consensus or thumbs up, whatever? Yes, it appears to be the consensus of the commission, so please go forward with that.
One final item, and just sort of looking for direction from the commission, is how would you like to proceed with regard to the three designated commissioners on the EDC board?
Are those tied, I mean, I, I almost see those as separate because of the fact that they are not tied to funding.
They are tied to funding, but they have expired.
I, I think we should bring that up. I think perhaps as a separate discussion item, but I mean, I'm, that's just, that's just what occurs to me, certainly whatever the commission wants to do. Because I would, I would like the funding items we have to go forward and not necessarily get bogged down in another discussion. However, can I get some input from the commissioners? That's just my thought. That's one out of seven. Anybody else have any thoughts they'd like to express? Commissioner Carpenter?
I, I've honestly just got a clarifying question on it. So the, the diamond membership that has existed to date, that has yielded the, the three seats, is, are we anticipating that that continues in, in 2024?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Are, are we anticipating that that continues in 2024 regardless of the county's contribution?
Yes. I mean, because that is, looking at their website, they have different levels of memberships into the EDC. And so their largest membership is their Diamond Crown.
Understood.
And if you look at those members that are Diamond Crown, especially the majority of the municipalities are at the Diamond Crown level. So my recommendation is that while we're not necessarily doing what we've done in the past with the EDC, I would recommend that the change, that the county be a member of the EDC, which at the Diamond Crown level.
Oh, and, and do we have a, a figure on that?
$4,000.
I see. Okay. I didn't understand. We were-
I'm sorry. Yeah, so that is, that, the $4,000 is a Diamond Crown level membership in the EDC. And so I am recommending that we move the funds to do that, because right now we have no funding available to be a member of the EDC.
Could you just for clarification, go through what the diamond, uh, membership would, what the benefits would be, just so, just to re, repeat that?
Sure. So Diamond Crown membership includes 10 designated representatives, five invitation to speakers' private receptions, special recognition at all events and featured on, on the EDC's website and social media as a Diamond Crown member.
I'm sorry, did you, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Thank you. And that, and that's, I apologize. That's my fault. The, the 7,500 for government memberships I thought was, was just these, the chamber increases and that kind of thing.
Yeah, right.
I didn't, I should have looked closer at the 4,000 to EDC. Okay. So, so I just wanna clarify with the commission then. Have we, have we agreed that we are doing that piece? Because I, when I, I, and again, that's totally my fault. Didn't realize that we were agreeing to that piece. So I don't know if there needs to be discussion about that or not. And, you know, if the commission thinks that it's worth the 4,000 for the Diamond membership, then I'm happy to support that as well. Just.
Since Commissioner Carpenter and another commissioner had indicated they were not necessarily cleared, if we want to continue that discussion, for, for clarification's sake, certainly if any commissioner wants to seek more clarification or would like to express an opinion on that particular facet, I'd be happy to recognize them. Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. Well, I'll just say that, that was my understanding, but I'll, I'll just say two things. One, that, that membership does not affect what is in their bylaws. So we still have our governance.
Right. That is my understanding.
Right. So as, as we had a wonderful conversation about that, you know, that, that does not change. And, and so that is, that's different. But what I will say is, since they, they do represent Clay County and we are not doing anything contractually, I think at a minimum, we, it makes sense to me to at least have a membership in the organization. That's my feeling about it. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Further comments? Commissioner Wagner, excuse me, Commissioner Whittington?
Yeah, don't disrespect Commissioner Wagner like that. I'm fine with having a membership in, in Mark. I mean, it's only 4,000, or not Mark, but the EDC, it's only 4,000. I, I'm fine with that. But as for the membership, or the board, I haven't been to any meetings because they haven't been inviting me and I've emailed them and I haven't heard back. And I know at that last luncheon, they had Commissioner Wagner listed instead of me. So that's why I haven't been to any board meetings. But I've emailed them and I haven't heard back from them, so.
Commissioner Johnson?
So since the three of us were appointed to that board, there's only been one meeting. I was the one that made it. John and I got stuck in traffic, was almost there, it was a short meeting, and I know you weren't invited. But I've only had one meeting. My recommendation would be to continue with the same three, but that's, I guess, another conversation. But just, once again, I, I agree with what's written here in your recommendations and with supporting the EDC in this manner.
Anyone else? Is everyone still good with the consensus that we just voted on? This has not changed anybody's opinion on consensus? I see no one indicating that it does change. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, I just wanna say, I think it makes a lot of sense to do it. And to the extent that we wanna resolve who our three people will be, I think it makes sense to maintain the, the same three unless somebody else really wants to speak up and vie for it.
I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe because there was an expiration on that resolution, we would need to revisit that and, and renew that at, maybe just to the point of just changing the date. I mean, it could be something that simple.
Correct. That, that is correct. It was through, for the year of 2023. So if the desire is the same three individuals, we'd bring a resolution forward saying, you know, for 2024. If that's the direction of the commission.
I just, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that if we started getting into some issues on that, that it did not delay the, the funding for the road and the rest of that stuff. If, if we're two different issues, then separate the, the one that might have some discussion from the one that seems to have broad consensus. But I'm, I'm okay doing whatever the commission wants to do.
So I'm seeing some-
Perhaps it'd be good to also circle around and to confirm that all three, I mean, we could ask them now and, and I hesitate to put people on the spot, but certainly we would wanna confirm that those individuals would still be interested. And then we would bring it up for action on the, by the commissions. My, my guess is how it would proceed.
So, so I see a lot of head nodding. So I think you're good with the proposed funding. I will reach out to the three to see if you would like to re-up. And then we'll bring forward a resolution with those three individuals and you all can discuss and, and vote at that time.
Great. I think that's, is everybody good with that procedure?
Yeah.
Very good. Any other comments before we move to the next discussion item? Seeing none. That brings us to U.S. Bicycle Route 51 through Clay County. That is also administration?
Thank you. The county has been approached for consideration of supporting U.S. Bicycle Route 51 through Clay County. So MODOT, the Missouri Bike Federation and the Adventure Cycling Association are leading the efforts to expand the United States Bicycle Routes system in the state of Missouri. So there are, and, and just for your information, U.S. Bicycle Routes were established in 1982 by ASHTO, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. And so there are two existing bicycle routes in Missouri. One is Route 76, which is east-west direction in the southern part of the state. And it's about 348 miles. And then there is Route 66, which leads from St. Louis to Joplin. It also goes into Oklahoma and that is about a 345-mile route. And so what they're looking at in, in creating is United States Bicycle Route 51, which basically is on the western side of the state. It goes north and south and it actually goes from Iowa down to Arkansas. And in Missouri, that's about 554 miles through the state of Missouri for this particular route. If you've never been on one, if you've never participated or if you've never really seen one, there are different ways in which the route is designated. So it could be signage. And so that could be marked along the routes. You may see those as you travel. Also, there's designation in maps, either on paper or on the internet. There can be pavement markings depending on the roadways and et cetera. These, the expense would not be at the county's cost. When they look at routes, it's sort of a trade-off with regard to areas that have low traffic. They're looking for direct routes. They also wanna have and provide access services to the bike riders, right? So a place to get off, have some amenities, also have services in case your bike might break down. They also try to go to access points of interest. And then they also scenic routes, right? So it may not be an access point to an area of interest like historical, but it could be a lovely scenic route for the bike riders to enjoy. So this map line might be a little hard to see, actually shows you U.S., the proposed route for U.S. Bicycle Route 51, starting up in Iowa, going all the way through Missouri and then down into northern Arkansas. This, if we try to actually then map out, this is the route in Clay County, coming out of Clinton County on Dykes Road and then heading south, done some meandering. They have Jesse James Farm area as a place of interest. Then it goes to the east, it goes up into Watkins Mill, goes a little farther north and then over into the city of Larson, which again, you'd have some amenities for the riders. Then heading down south on Salem Road into Excelsior Springs, which again, destination and also having some amenities for the bike riders and if there are any problems with their bikes. And then it leaves Clay County and goes into Ray County. So, you know, what they're asking for, what this proposal and how this is, is, occurs, is they're asking for all the jurisdictions which are, that the route goes through, of letters of support, a resolution of support. So just to show you the status of where this is, all the jurisdictions south of the river, Missouri River, have approved their portion of the routes. Mid-America Regional Council has also submitted a letter of support for this route in the region. Clinton County and the city of Excelsior Springs have both approved their routes that have been proposed. We've had staff look at the route coming through Clay County, both the sheriff's office and the highway department, to see if they saw any issues with the proposed route, in which they did not. So what they're asking the commissioners to do is consider this and submitting to MODOT a letter or a resolution of support. MODOT is, is capturing all the letters of support from all the jurisdictions through the state of Missouri. MODOT then handles the submittal and the application to ASHTO. In the spring is their timetable and then ASHTO will make a decision whether it receives this designation or not. Happy to answer any questions and get some direction from the commission if you would like to proceed with a letter of support or a resolution of support.
I basically have two questions. One is the impact on traffic. It doesn't sound like that's a concern that staff had identified.
You know, with regard to, you know, information from the organizations, they said even with the designation, you know, you may see an increase of riders of maybe 1,000 over the entire year, right? So these are really dedicated long-distance riders. They are experienced in all different types of road conditions. So they're used to narrow roads, they're used to roads without shoulders. You know, they're, that's, that is what they're used to. And so I don't know that we would see any, didn't raise any major concerns from a public safety standpoint from the sheriff's office.
I was concerned with that end traffic flow because there's a stretch of, was it Berry Road between Oak and Truce, where they put bike lanes in. And I've yet to see more than one or two since it's been put in there. Maybe I just go at the wrong time. What I do see is we now have one, one lane of traffic going from west to east on that stretch of road instead of two. So I, it sounded as though that this- So I, it sounded as though that this did not raise those same kind of concerns because obviously I'm looking at a rather more urban area than what we're talking about here. The other impact that I was wondering about, and that would be on tourism, is there any information we have, what we might expect to see as these cyclists pass through our county?
We did not receive anything from them with regard to, that I recall from an economic benefit. I'm sure there is, but again, you know, these are individuals or small groups. This isn't necessarily where, you know, you're going to see a bike race. You could, but, you know, usually, it's not usually planned events. It's just an opportunity for dedicated cyclists that take an opportunity to do the U.S. routes.
Thank you. Commissioner Withington.
So I'm fine with this. I support this. I think this is actually a good thing. I have some friends who are crazy enough to do this. They go all over the country and do this. And so, you know, there, it's not like somebody with no experience is going to be out there. So I'm not worried about safety concerns. I mean, these guys, they're basically pros, right? So I think, safety's not an issue. As far as the bike lanes, but I think there's a lot of people who give, don't give, who look at bike lanes as negative. Bike lanes aren't negative. So I think this is going to be a good thing, especially for the eastern part of our county. And to answer Commissioner Nolte's question about tourism, I just did a quick Google search. Bicycle tourism contributes about $83 billion annually to the entire U.S. economy. So I think this will be a good thing, especially since it's going to be out on the eastern side of the county. You know, I think Kearney and Excelsior and Lawson will see some benefit from this. So, and they're not going to put a bike lane on this. You're going to have your two-lane highway, and they're just going to put a designation. So you're not going to see a bike lane on the, on the high, on, you know. So I'm fine with this. I think it's good. I'll support it.
I think, you know, one of the things that we're, as staff, continue to look at as, as we replace bridges across the county, you know, one of the things we may be looking at is how do we expand some bridges, not only to have really good two-lane, but is there a way to make sure we have pedestrian access, which also could be used for--
That was something I was going to talk to you guys about as we replace them because, you know, it'd be safer to have a pedestrian side. And you know that, what's that arch bridge that we were looking at getting rid of?
The historical one?
Yeah. Like, I would like to see us figure out a way to keep that bridge and maybe put a trail through there sometime or something, but have that be the pedestrian crossing, since it's a one-lane, one-lane bridge anyway. And then we could put the bridge next to it. I just hate the idea of tearing down Clay County's one and only historical bridge like that, so.
And staff, we've had some, since this has come up, we've had some plumb discussions too, obviously, since the route is like through James Farm, and we have a park across from the James Farm. So we've talked about what are some things that we might be able to put there for cyclists, like, you know, there are sort of those bike things that, you know, you can air up your tires, and so there are the-- and I'm not a cyclist, obviously, but-- so there are some things that we're looking about on, you know, are there grants available that we can also make sure that this is a pleasant experience through Clay County?
You may reach out to BikeWalkKC. You know, Eric Rogers, he's, he's, he could probably help you with some ideas too. But yeah, they do have those bike stations. North Kansas City's put in a couple where you can actually repair your bike right there. You can air it up, you can do all that stuff. But yeah, Eric Rogers at BikeWalkKC, he'd be a good resource.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, please, some recognition?
Yeah, thank you. No, I just want to say, support this fully, especially now, after having heard from our representative on the Mark Bicycle Committee, our, our local expert, if he's in favor than I am too. And I think it is an important distinction. We're not talking about bike lanes here. We're just talking about signage to indicate the route, basically. Because I live right, right where you're talking about, and tend to agree on that specific location, that maybe wasn't the wisest choice there. But in this case, yeah, no, I think this makes a lot of sense, and happy to sign the letter of support when it gets written.
Commissioner Lawson, I think, and then Commissioner Johnson, please.
Probably about, maybe before the pandemic, there was a big bike tour that came through Missouri. And I sat on the Kearney Chamber of Commerce at the time, and we had all kinds of stuff set up for them. It was huge. I've never seen so many bikes. And the negative, the only negative I see, I worry about them. They come up Salem Road from time to time where we live, and it's a dangerous road. It's hilly and curvy, and, and you can't see what's ahead of you. And they're in that lane, and these idiots are passing them, you know, on the hill. That always bothers me. But I noticed something, the last time a group came through, they had like a chase vehicle with them, and they kind of followed behind to kind of keep everybody safe. So I thought that was a really good thing. But when they, when they come through in bulk, they really come through.
Yeah, when they're doing races.
What they do. So, you know, we, we need all the recognition we can get, if, like at the James Farm, any of those, Watkins Mill, that's, that's great.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Couple of questions. By approving this, does it change at all any of our control over these roads as far as, let's say they wanted to put in a bike lane? Would we still have the final say on that?
Yes. You're not giving up any control or any special requirements that we'd have to do standards to those roads unless you so choose to. So there, we're not agreeing to, you know, any improvements to the roads are now all going to have bike lanes. No, that's not a requirement.
And is there any additional upkeep that we need to, to keep? In other words, how do I say this? So, so in Southern, I used to be one of those spandex warriors, you call them, before I was, got to the point where I had no business wearing spandex anymore. But when I used to ride, cycle in Southern California, one of the issues we had in Newport Beaches, we had to make sure that we kept the streets clear for cyclists. I mean, clear debris on the ground. We had street sweepers that go out in the bike lanes on a regular basis to keep them clear. Does it create any, any additional responsibility on us to keep those bike lanes or those designated areas clear of debris, that kind of stuff?
No, not that we're aware of.
Any legal issues if?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you.
That is a really great point, by the way, Commissioner, because a small impediment in the, in the traffic way, that might be nothing to a automobile, might be, you know, very impactful to a bicyclist. That's an awfully good point to raise. Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm going to thank Commissioner Johnson for giving me this vision of spandex and, which I'm going to, I'm going to work on the rest of the evening. But, sorry, in all seriousness, I do liken this to some of the signs you see for, you know, the Lewis and Clark Trail. It's kind of a something that you can take into, although this, this may, may provide a little bit more opportunity. And my, I guess my suggestion is that, to your point, it is going by some of our tourist assets. And it does seem to me that it is one thing to say, okay, we're, we're part of the team, but it's another to perhaps be, or find ways for us to be a bit more proactive. Because as I understand, you know, this is a, this is a community that talks a lot with one another, right? And it does seem to me if we have things at Watkins Mill, for example, or at Jesse James Farm that is attractive to them, even if it's a place to pump up your tires, I think that can go a very long way. But we have a tourism expert of our own who can provide some guidance. So I would just, my, my, I'm all for it. I think it's great. I think it's worth seeing what we can do to be a, a location of choice because we have some assets. And I don't think it will take much of an investment to do that. So go forth and conquer, and I've got something else to forget, so thank you very much.
I appreciate Commissioner Wagner bringing up the tourism aspect, because that's kind of what I was trying to get at, and that is that if there is a place for a bicyclist to air up their tires or whatever, or a place just to kind of take a breather, and it just so happens it's at one of our tourist destinations that will sell fine merchandise to any individuals who cares to buy them, so be it.
Absolutely.
Can, any other comments or questions on this issue before we close the discussion? You were looking for consensus to go forward on this, I take it?
I think we have consensus for support, so at next week's agenda, we'll have a resolution of support for the board to take action on, and then we will submit that to MODOT before their deadline of mid-February.
Okay. I don't see any dissent, so I believe you have consensus. That concludes the, unless there's any other comments, the bicycle issue. That brings us to our final discussion item, which is tech specs. I kind of like the way that rolls off the tongue. And it's highways.
It is highway. I'd like to introduce Highway Administrator Terry Griffin, who's going to introduce this topic and our guest speaker.
Very good. Please proceed.
Good evening. Terry Griffin, Highway Administrator. Let me get this up here just a second. Okay, we'd like to discuss this evening, proposal to, or the update to the Technical Specifications and Design Criteria Manual. This is a manual that sets the minimum standards for new infrastructure development in Clay County. The manual that we currently use was adopted in 1999 and has not been updated since that time, so clearly we have some steps to make to bring it up to date. Updating infrastructure standards is an important thing to help us reach the strategic goals the commission has set, including sustainable infrastructure that will meet the current and future needs of residents and businesses, and it will also help us support the type of balanced growth that the comprehensive plan is working towards defining for us. In order to get this done, we requested proposals from the county's on-call engineering services, feeling that we needed an engineer to help us with this that was familiar with unincorporated Clay County and with our current standards. Of the proposals that we received, it was determined that Petricor Engineering and Design had provided the lowest and best proposal for this task. And so tonight, Darren Sanders, who is a project engineer for this task, is here to discuss the process and a general overview of some of the changes that are going to be made with this. Darren has over 25 years of experience. He specializes in roadway design and subdivision layout, as well as hydrology and hydraulic concerns. He has, in addition, he's spent most of his career in and around the Clay County area, so he's very familiar with the area generally. He also served as transportation manager for the county for a couple of years, and he is now the primary, or he has done most of this, new subdivision infrastructure inspections over the last couple of years. And so with that, I'll introduce Darren and let him explain the process.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Darren Sanders, and I am with Petricor Engineering and Design. I'm senior project manager and principal for the, for our company. And I am here, as Ms. Griffin said tonight, to present to you the update on the technical specifications and design criteria. So just to give you a little background information, what, what are we dealing with here? Well, the technical specifications is a detailed and comprehensive document that describes the technical procedures, such as the type of pipes to be used and the type of asphalt. You can think of those as kind of like your construction specifications, best way to deal with it. The Design Criteria Manual sets the minimum set of design standards that a project must meet to be, to be considered acceptable. So your minimum pipe size, your minimum asphalt thickness to go along those same lines. As Ms. Griffin mentioned, the current design information that you have is prepared by the Clay County Highway Department in November of 1999, and it was approved by the commission through Ordinance 99ORD 52 in December of 1999. So it's 25 years since it's been reviewed or updated. And in going through and looking at this, it was written similar to other communities, such as Liberty, and the thought, including sections in there for water and sewer. Now, the original thought was that in 15, 20 years from 1999, the county would probably have its own water and sewer departments, which we know is not the case. Clay County Public Health Department is the one who sets the design criteria utilizing federal and state guidelines for sanitary sewers, and we have several water districts within the county, and they set the standards for utilizing designs depending upon the district. Now, as I mentioned, it's been 25 years since the county has looked at their design standards, and most communities use five to 10 years they go through and look at them. So as I mentioned earlier, we wanted to put a plan together. And so we thought that the best way to come up with this plan, that way we're getting all the information in, to come up with the best that we could, was to take the current design technical specifications and Design Criteria Manual and discuss with county stakeholders, such as highway department and planning and zoning that deals with them all the time, to determine what they're seeing, what issues do they have, as well as review local communities, what are they using? So we've done online searches and contacts with these communities. Some has returned our calls and visited with us, others did not return our call. So after we got the review done, we turned around and met back with our stakeholders again, and one of the things that we decided to do, the best thing, was to meet with experts that's actually utilizing these, whether it's engineers and/or contractors. And that's what we did. So after we reviewed the information, and I said, as I stated, we met with their stakeholders, one of the things that we noticed was everybody, most folks were using the APWA Kansas City section with modifications. And then we met with the industry professionals, the engineers and the contractors, to determine what was working well, what, in other communities, and what areas needed to be updated in Clay County. And so we also have gone through, and we've added some sections to address some issues that have come up in the past with the county, whether it's highway department or planning and zoning, to try to alleviate some issues. And one thing that we kind of thought was most important, since the county does not have control over a sanitary sewer or a water line, it's best to eliminate those. We don't need to have conflicts with the actual folks' design criteria. So where are we at? So we decided to format this in four different books, and some of them are relatively small, some of them are fairly thick. So we have the Procedures for Submission, which is the general procedures and what needs to be followed. The Design Criteria Manual, once again, utilizing APWA standards with modifications that's being made. An Erosion Control Manual, which has not been developed in the county until now, and the Technical Specifications Manual. Current status, the information is in draft format. The county stakeholders have reviewed approximately half of the information. The next round will be submitted to them, hopefully the end of this month, and then the final portion will be submitted, hopefully in February sometime. And soon as we get comments back from that, we'll get them turned around and be back before you for approval and adoption. And with that, open it up for questions.
Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation, and thanks for being here tonight.
Sure.
So my question is more around the third parties who might use a document like this. You had mentioned one of your stakeholder groups are the contractors, but I'm thinking of those who will hire the contractors. And so even though we're not necessarily looking to develop subdivisions and other things in, at least in the unincorporated parts of the county, I do recognize that that does occur. And so I guess my, I'm curious, and maybe this is more of an administrator or planning question, is there expectation that developers or those who are doing housing or other sorts of construction within the unincorporated part of the county will use, or will use this as their guide to understand what kind of development they can do and those infrastructure requirements? And if that is the case, have we relied upon the contractors to be the stakeholder to represent that position, or have we actually put it out there to those who have or may do development in Clay County to get some response?
Sure. And I can answer quite a bit of that for you.
Great.
Awesome. There's a couple of different things here, I think, that you're, you may be confusing a little bit. These design technical, and Design Criteria Manual and Technical Specification refers to infrastructure only. So we're talking streets and stormwater.
Right.
One of the reasons why we went through and reviewed what the, the criteria is in other communities-- other communities is we did not want to be way outside the box that everybody is going to be, uh, giving us pushback on.
Right.
For the better part of worse. So when we met with our stakeholders, the county, this is the reason why we met with the, the Highway Department and the Planning and Zoning, then we met with design engineers who are actually utilizing the criteria in subdivision development and discussed it with them, as well as the contractors that are utilizing it. And they were, they brought some very good suggestions and some things that is happening in Kansas City or Liberty that we didn't know about, uh, to help bring up the roadway standards in Clay County. Because ultimately what we would, I mean, as the cities are growing, they're taking land out of the unincorporated areas. So if there's a subdivision that's going to be incorporated in, we want that to meet the standards of whatever the city is. And so that's one of the reasons why we, we did that. I hope that answered your question.
No, no, it does. And of course, my colleagues know, but, but just for your benefit, I, I served as a councilman in Kansas City for eight years, and I have heard my share of horror stories that I'm trying to forget about the, design and requirements. And so, just want to make sure that we're not inviting, uh, that for ourselves. So I appreciate the answer very much. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. So I'm very, very ignorant, um, about this. So I guess first and foremost, I don't really understand what this is. Is this a, um, do you put together a manual of specs that, that the county's supposed to abide by? Is that what this is?
What this is, is as an engineer.
Yeah.
We have to know what your ordinances are, what you require for design criteria. The Missouri Department of Transportation has their design criteria that we have to go by. So whether you're dealing with F Highway or Interstate 70, there's a set of regulations that you have to follow to make that design. Same way with your bridges. As you do a bridge replacement, there are federal, state guidelines that has to be abided by.
Right.
So we are doing the Design Criteria Manual, which you've already had, that was completed in 1999 and adopted, we're just updating that. And I guess you could say, yeah, we're writing a whole new manual. Now, in addition to that, with respect to your, um, question about does the county have to abide by it, there is variance process in where if there is a different, if the road needs to be, I know the roadway width was a big discussion a while ago. Um, the, if the roadway width on this county standard right now is 24 feet and you want to make it 20 feet or 22 feet, there's a variance process that can be approved by the Highway Administrator. So it, there are some things that we have been in discussion with that, that the crews will be implementing. However, it's ultimately up to the Highway Department as to what, what is done.
So when, when it comes to the, the specifications and the technical specs, that kind of stuff, or whether it's highways or bridges or whatever, there are some requirements that the feds have.
Mm-hmm.
There's some requirements at the state level.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then, uh, does this contain additional requirements? Is that what that is? Or is it? I guess that's why I'm confused.
Okay. What these will be made, what these will be used for is like for the, mostly for the design of subdivisions, so streets and stormwater. Your county's standards and design criteria will always be trumped, I guess, I hate to use the word trumped, but it will always be, um...
Superseded.
Superseded by the state and federal guidelines.
Right. Okay. Um, and then this document that you're, that you're talking about, this, I think you said the last time it was done is in 99 or something like this.
1999, yes, sir.
So at some point, this one is going to be outdated, what you're talking about now.
One of the things that I've been working with Ms. Griffin and Mr. Walters is going through and trying to set up a review process. So every five to 10 years, the Highway Administrator would have the ability, and we're also going to be, we're visiting with legal some as well, to have the ability to go through, review it, and if there's any updates, they can make that update to that document. One of the reasons why they're, they've decided to use APWA is APWA goes through and reviews and updates their stuff as needed on a regular basis. So by reference to the APWA manual, your document is a living document.
Yeah, that's where I was going. So that's where I was going with it. This is going to be some kind of living document. I know we have in, and I think the Sheriff's Department uses Lexipol, if I'm not mistaken. Um, you guys use Lexipol?
No.
Oh, you don't. Um, so Lexipol is one of those, those things that I know a lot of law enforcement and, and fire departments use, where it's, it's updated on a regular bas- it's nationwide. And when, uh, certain case laws change or specifications, whatever it is, it changed.
Sure.
Those are emailed to the people who buy into this manual, and they can accept that, those changes, you know, to be in compliance with the law or whatever.
Sure.
Um, makes it a living document. So it's really not going to expire. Um, so it, it sounds like that's something you guys are trying to get to with this?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Okay, I'm still just as confused as I was before, but, uh, we have to talk. Thanks.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, not to go back over everything, but if, if I understand this properly, then you've coordinated with KIP, who's our planning and zoning guy, and with, with Mr. Walters as well. And so if I'm a contractor, and I'm going to put in a subdivision out in the rural area, I'm going to go to this book as kind of my bible as we plan the streets and things of that nature?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and it will, it will, while it will take care of the federal guidelines, it will also incorporate into that some of our requirements. So if KIP goes out, he, he'll, they'll know before KIP comes out that this is exactly the way our road needs to be.
Yes.
It has to be, you know, this wide, it has to be all those many things.
Yeah.
Okay. So in just a good line, good guideline for these planners and developers that are out there.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Great.
This, these technical specifications and design criteria will be utilized in conjunction with the Land Development Code.
Great. Great. Yeah. Well, and thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
And I would point out that this is for infrastructure, this is for infrastructure. It's not necessarily for everything else that goes on.
Right.
It is strictly, it's primarily for new infrastructure as well.
Right.
And, and I guess I will point out, back to Commissioner Johnson's comment, if you're getting funding through like MODOT or state or federal agency, those trump whatever yours is. So depending upon what your bridge loading is, you know, for a BRO bridge, you've got to do certain loadings, and it has to be a certain, you know, passing certain storms and stuff like that, so.
This, uh, it sounds like we're dealing with two things that I kind of have on my mind when we talk about these issues. The first one is, for what, better or worse, uh, we are going to have more and more of our area which becomes incorporated. And so one of the issues that, that I think is of importance that we should pay attention to is to make sure that when we put these guidelines together, that if, say the city of Liberty decides they're going to, everybody decides that Liberty is going to annex a certain area, if we can, if we can be consistent, that may make that transition all that much smoother, and that way it wouldn't require any, um, any extra effort sort of planning for where it will invariably go. And the other issue, and I, I kind of, I kind of banged this drum on a regular basis, and that is that I am, I have a lot of concerns about, particularly when they're not close to a municipal boundary, and that is, uh, suburban-type, uh, developments, because we are not, as a county government, as well-equipped to deal with the maintenance of those roads and everything else as a municipal government. We are, we are geared more towards long roads, broad roads, uh, not a neighborhood where you've got streets that curve around and you've got cars parking on the streets. So, um, this is something I, I concern myself with is because apart from the fact that we've got to go through there and maintain these roads at a certain point, also, once these developments are done, um, we will be, assuming they're not incorporated into a municipality, we're going to have to deal with the maintenance. And I think that we, we would do well to pay more attention to when those roads are put in, to make sure that we are working with developers to say, you know, that they're, they're not going to hold together for just the, the few years that the developer is responsible, then once they're turned over to the county, they, they start to deteriorate. So I think we need to make sure that, uh, we are serving the long-term interests of our citizens, which is to have roads that will last, uh, and I'm not saying that we don't, but I'm just saying we need to make sure that, that we have roads that we are capable of maintaining until whatever point when they become incorporated, or they may not. But the point is, we need to make sure we're paying attention and looking with an eye to the future on these things, which means it might require more infrastructure to put it together. Same thing with water runoff, if a municipality annexes an area and there are water issues, much better served to be taking care of those as we go, to make sure that those would fold as seamlessly as, as possible into a municipal system. So that's, those are the two issues that I, I think are important, and I'm really glad to see us getting this, uh, kind of rolling, uh, and putting it into place. So thank you very much for the hard work you're doing and the rest of the people involved. Commissioner Withington, you seek recognition?
Yeah, no, I just want to say that, uh, I'm glad you guys worked with our local municipalities to, you know, review their standards too, because this commission should not be in the subdivision business. And, uh, a previous commission screwed up and got us stuck with one subdivision that Liberty won't annex. So, uh, I don't want to see that happen to us anymore. So, uh, I'm glad you guys are meeting with them, because if we're going to start approving subdivisions, then I think before we even get close to it hitting us, those conversations need to be had with, uh, those municipalities to make sure that they're going to annex it in, so we're not stuck with the subdivision, so.
I was going to say, and also, we not really pointed it out very firmly, but we're, we're, the technical design and the Design Criteria and Technical, Technical Specifications Manual is also being developed in coordination with the Comprehensive Plan that is being, uh, that's under development now. And the next update, I believe, that Planning and Zoning Plans is the Land Development Code, and that one will also feed into both of the Comprehensive Plan and the Technical Specifications. It's, it's a continued effort, an integrated effort to make sure that all of those things work together. The Comprehensive Plan will tell us general ideas about what kind of development and where we want development in an incorporated county. The Land Development Code and the Technical Specs will explain more to the developers and the planners about what it specifically needs to happen in those areas.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
And to Commissioner Withington, um, I just want to make sure that I, I made clear, I did not necessarily meet with the cities themselves. You can find their Design Criteria manuals online to be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm glad that you actually took the time to look at those, and yeah, I know you can find those online.
Okay.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Um, I want to echo Commissioner Withington's point. He makes an excellent point. Um, I'm not necessarily going to name that subdivision, but I will say that I spent a considerable amount of my, uh, time on this commission during that period of time, getting my backside kicked on a very regular basis as I tried to push back on that. And, uh, the thing is, having a document of this sort where we have, where I, where a, a commissioner, in that case, the lone voice in the wilderness, would have something to at least hold up and say, folks, this ain't right, uh, is extremely helpful. I wish we would have had this back in the day. I don't know that I would have prevailed, but I would have at least had something to wave around and shout up, shout more about than I was. I was shouting enough as it was. Um, but, uh, no, Commissioner's, uh, Commissioner Withington's point is, of course, I think one that resonates with me completely. And, uh, the, uh, the thing is, and I've said it before, a, a lot of what we do has got to be, um, dependent upon a, a good working relationship with the municipalities. And this is one of those areas, I think, where it is entirely appropriate that we would have that working relationship. Any other comments or questions before we close the discussion? I see none. Would you like to leave us with any thoughts?
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Administrator, is there anything that you're seeking as far as consensus, or was this informational?
No, this was just informational to give you an update, and we'll be back, um, at the conclusion of the project and present that information to you again.
Very good. If there are no further questions or comments, then this will conclude our discussion items. That brings us to the Administrator, County Administrator comments. Administrator?
Just a couple of items, um, as has been mentioned tonight about the Comprehensive Plan and the update of the Comprehensive Plan. So I just want to remind everyone that there's still an opportunity for public engagement. You can go online and complete the survey if you've not done that, or you can also, um, we still have the virtual open house available. Both of those are going to be online and available to the public through January 31st, and you can find that at claycountycompass.com. Um, so we encourage everybody to go out and take the opportunity to give us their feedback on, um, where they see and want the development of the county to be in the future. Um, the second item is, the next meeting of the commission will be next Thursday evening, January 25th, 6 o'clock here in the chambers. And then the third item is just go Chiefs.
Very good. That brings us to Commissioner comments, and I am compelled, uh, to, by the dazzle of her wardrobe, to go to Commissioner Lawson first. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make at this time? Your, your, your wardrobe is, is certainly an elegant comment. Commissioner Withington. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Carpenter?
Go Chiefs.
There we go. Commissioner Wagner?
Go Chiefs.
Well, I am not going to break the good times. I am going to say go Chiefs, and that will be the extent of what I have to say. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.